I'd like to welcome everybody to the May Amherst County School Board Meeting. We have a very full house tonight. Is there people still trying to make their way in? Okay, okay. Dr. Wells, you want to start something for us?
First, thank you, Mr. Chair. For all of our guests here tonight, we have several recognitions.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the May Amherst County School Board meeting. We have a very full house tonight. Is there people still trying to make their way in? Okay, okay. Dr. Wells, you want to start something for us?
Yeah, first, thank you, Mr. Chair. For all of our guests here tonight, we have several recognitions and there are a lot of folks waiting to get in. So I would ask that if you want to stay for the meeting, you can. However, if we recognize your children or your students, if you are so inclined to leave, that's fine. But if you want to stay, we'll find more seats. But just try to cycle out when we have those recognitions. And again, if you want to stay, we'll be glad to find room for you.
Great, thank you very much. So if we could all stand for a moment of silence and pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, board, we have a, we have an agenda in front of us. Motion?
I make a motion, we approve the agenda for this evening.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Dr. Wells?
All right, so we'll start with our recognition. So our first recognition tonight, and I'm going to come over here, but that's our students. Again, we have, I think we go all the way up there. That's kind of tall. So we have several recognitions tonight. First is our school board reps. Each year, we have two seniors from Amherst County High School who serve as school board representatives. And tonight, we are recognizing Denasia Brown and Will Carver for their time on the board this year. We have a certificate for them, as well as a plaque, so to speak. And I want to present that to them at this time. So will Denasia. And we want to thank them. Just so everybody knows what it says. It says, "In recognition of your exceptional dedication and invaluable service as a student representative on the Amherst County School Board, Amherst County School Board Student Representatives 2024-2025." Yeah, I just want to thank them for taking time out of their schedules every month to be here. They're very active in school. And I know there's a lot they have to move schedules around, things like that, to get us to get here. So we want to thank them for that. And I don't know if, Mr. Chair, if you want to say anything, we want to picture with them real quick or not? And they have words they're going to share when it's their turn to speak tonight. All right, next, we have our students of the month for the month of April. So when I call your name, please come forward. And then I'll say a few words about each individual student as they come up. Would Gideon Thomas, Amherst County High School? Just a few things. Straight A's throughout the year, heavily involved in athletics and football. He also was the lead as Nathan Detroit in the musical Guys and Dolls. So, and he has also plans on going to the Marine Corps when he graduates. So the high school also has Noah Goff, who missed the February one because of all the sickness and weather. So if he's here, he can come forward. Noah? So Noah is a senior at Amherst County High School, and is works in the office as an intern, and works hard to make life easier for the office staff and the school in general. One of his teachers, Ms. Ratliff, stated that he's always cheerful, and is positive in class, and is always willing to help others. And they just want to thank you for all you've done. So thank you. Robert Adcock, AEC. Okay, we'll move on. Grayson Clark, Amherst Middle School. Natalia Haley, Manelison Middle School. Natalia, she was nominated because of her strong work ethic, and she goes above and beyond in her studies and actively participates in class. She has a positive attitude and is always willing to help others. And she creates a positive and supportive environment for her peers. So thank you. Remington Simmons, Amalon. Remington? Come on up. Remington was student of the month because he consistently shows kindness to others, helps everyone around him, and always puts forth his best effort. And he embodies what it means to be respectful, responsible, and safe as a true Amalon Bulldog. Congratulations. Elijah Sogor, Amherst Elementary School. Elijah's a fourth grader at AES, and he's selected because he always does his best. He's kind to everyone, and shows what it means to be focused, accountable, and respectful every single day. He has a positive attitude and helps make the classroom a better place. Congratulations. Amherst Elementary also had one from February who couldn't be here, and that is Liam Burks. Liam? And Liam was the student of the month because he shows compassion to his classmates, is respectful to his teachers, and follows school and classroom rules. He is kind, witty, and overall a great kid to be around every day. Ashton Desper, CES. Ashton is a great student who goes above and beyond to help others in class, uses her manners, and completes tasks for the teacher, and is a great friend to all. She is kind, considerate, and has great attendance. She's a true wildcat. Congratulations. Alina Smith, Elan Elementary. Alina was selected because she works hard in and out of the classroom. She is a wonderful mentor to younger students, especially the kindergartners. She is one of our Eagle ambassadors and is always accountable and respectful. So soar on, Alina. Congratulations. Jalen Cook, Madison Heights. Jalen was nominated because it's possible, an example of kindness and compassion. Her warm heart and positive attitude brightens everyone, brightens everyone's day. And she approaches each task with determination and a smile. She puts her very best effort and inspires her classmates to do the same. She is caring, and that makes, and she is wonderful to her friends and peers. And her genuine enthusiasm for learning is contagious. Congratulations, Jalen. And Major Thompson, Temperance Elementary School. Second grader, Temperance Elementary School. And he is selected because everyone who has the pleasure of knowing him has experienced how he brings a smile to their faces, has a wealth of random knowledge, he is so inquisitive and smart. He's truly a great friend and overall good person. Congratulations. All right, this squeeze is the other. So fair, what we do, we all have a certificate for you, plus the photograph. We'll get it to the school, and they can contact you as to how to pick this up. I want you to get all the photos developed. So not developed anymore, I guess. Printed, yeah, I know, I'm getting old. You know, I'm old. All right, Staff of the Month. So from Amherst County High School, Wendy Self. And for those of you who don't know, have a pretty big construction project going on at the high school. And we had to switch the cafeteria around. Matter of fact, the cafeteria no longer exists. Where they serve food no longer exists. So I had to move all the food service lines over to the old gym. So the students get their food from the old gym. But they were able to turn this around about two and a half days. So thank you for the work y'all did there to make that happen, because the kids wouldn't get their food if you hadn't taken that initiative. So thank you. Rebecca Peters, AEC. Tammy Sprouse, Amherst Middle School. So Tammy was nominated, she's the in-school suspension coordinator. And she's nominated because of her great attitude and is always willing to help in any way needed. She helps students reflect on why they're in in-school suspension and holds them accountable for their actions. We're so glad she's part of the AMS team, and congratulations. So thank you. Elizabeth Rose, Manelison Middle School. Matt Hayward, Amalon. Matt has been a valuable addition to the Amalon staff this year. He consistently maintains a positive attitude and is always willing to step in wherever he is needed. Despite managing a large caseload, he takes on significant responsibility with dedication, and he has built strong relationships with students, parents, and colleagues alike. Congratulations. Kathy Waller, Amherst Elementary School. Kelly Humphrey, Central Elementary School. Not here. Kaitlin Thomas, Elan. Melody Herman, Madison Heights. Teacher's playing hooky tonight. Oliver Canada, Temperance. And Natalia Cecil, school administration, she's not here either. So it's us. All right, next, we're going to recognize our teachers with 25 years' experience in Amherst County Public Schools. Some of these have both more experience than other divisions, but they've been in-school teaching here for 25 years, just in Amherst County. So we'll start. I think these are now political order, Brittany. Kelly Arrington. Lisa Basette. Oliver Canada. Melissa Carter. Jonathan Collins. Jennifer Fielder. Tammy Gilat. Regina Green. Mary Hughes. Kathy Lindsey. Wendy Sale. Christine Spicer. Janice Tomlin. And Bruce Turner. So I don't say a couple words, I'm going to take a picture, and y'all have the rest of your evening. But I do want to, you know, 25 years in one job, in one place, in one division, says a lot. I mean, I appreciate the time and effort y'all put in to being us, with us here at Amherst County Public Schools. And I've had the pleasure of working with some of y'all directly, and many of you in this current capacity as superintendent. But I do thank you for that. It's been 25 years in one place, says a lot. It says a lot, a lot about you, and it says a lot about what we do here in Amherst County Public Schools. So thank you very much. Appreciate your service to Du County. So thank you. Okay, next, we're going to recognize our Real World Design Challenge students. A little bit about this, this is, it's a state competition. It goes on to national. Our students have won the state the past three years. So they're the state champions three years in a row. You don't hear, but in sports, that would be something to be saying, I got three-year state champions, right, to be all over the place. It's not thought of this much, but it is a great achievement. And so we want to recognize them. However, sad news on this front is, we found out recently that the national organization that helped sponsor this has opted to stop the funding of the program. So we will be the last state champions of this unless it gets funded again. So we do want to congratulate them on all they've done. I'll turn it over to Dr. Crawford, and he can share some information.
Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to come here to explain a little bit of the background of the team, what the event is, and to bring up our students for what they did. So Ms. Betty Stinson is the sponsor that sponsors this program, and she's done this So Ms. Betty Stinson is the sponsor that sponsors this program, and she's done this for several years now. As Dr. Wells stated, she's won multiple state championships, which doesn't happen very often in sports or in other activities and things like that. So this is an incredibly important feat that they've accomplished over the last few years. So the name of the team this year was Women in STEM Excel, WISE. And so I'm going to read a little bit about the background. In recent times, the issue of wildfires has been plaguing the United States as well as other nations. These wildfires have been destroying numerous natural habitats and forests, most notably on the West Coast, particularly in places like California. The cost of fighting these wildfires has been detrimental, and agencies across the nation have been attempting to both effectively fight the wildfires and do so in a cost-effective manner. To achieve this, new technologies have been used to combat these wildfires. The goal of this challenge was to design a UAS, an uncrewed aircraft system that would effectively deliver supplies to those fighting fires quickly and efficiently. The team was tasked with creating and developing a drone that could deliver 70 liters of water, 25 liters of gasoline, and four plastic containers, all within six hours. Given this task, WISE designed the UAS titled Bunson, which was specifically created to cost-effectively deliver these materials quickly and accurately. I'm going to call the students up now and just give you a little bit of background about each one. The team leader, Phoebe Camp. Fun fact about Phoebe Camp is that she was the only remaining member of the 2024 Real World Design Challenge team. So we won three straight state championships, and Phoebe was the only one from last year that returned. So that speaks volumes to everybody, but most importantly, to your leadership and Ms. Stinson's leadership, so great job, Phoebe. Next up, we have Audrey Collins. Audrey is the mathematician. She's dual-enrolled senior at Amherst County High School, Central Virginia Governor's School, and attends Central Virginia Community College. In her free time, she loves being a barista at her local cafe. Audrey adores physics and hopes to attend the University of Tennessee to pursue a degree in nuclear engineering. Next, we have Ellie Armstrong. Ellie is one of our engineers. She's an Amherst County High School senior in the STEM Academy at Central Virginia Community College. She's worked with a lot of 3D printing, coding, and mechatronics. She hopes to further her education at Virginia Tech for the engineering program. Brianna Chapman. Brianna is also one of the engineers, and she's also a senior at Amherst County High School and in the STEM Academy at Central Virginia Community College. She has experience with CAD Fusion 360 and working with, as well as building Vex box, Vex bots, excuse me. She intends to continue her education at Virginia Tech and earn a degree in biomedical engineering. Next is Brianna Vergara. Brianna is a mathematician. She's a senior at Amherst County High School, and she does well in school and takes advanced classes. She has a Microsoft PowerPoint certification and does well in managing computer applications. Brianna plans to go to an in-state school to get her elementary education degree. And so I'll put a plug in, have you heard of Amherst County Public Schools? Would you like to come back and teach here? That's Brianna Vergara. Next, we have Shaklo Kajiva. Shaklo is... Shaklo is one of the writers. She's a senior at Amherst County High School and is dual-enrolled at CVCC as part of the CTE program, taking criminal justice. She's taken many advanced and AP classes at the high school and enjoys writing and research. She hopes to continue her education at George Mason University to pursue a law degree. Next, we have Aleah Blair. All right, and then finally, we want to mention that we have a former ACHS graduate to be honored here tonight as well, is Duncan Gordon. Is Duncan here? Yes. Duncan Gordon is a former ACHS student, he's currently working at Textron. Ms. Stinson reached out by email to ask Duncan if he would be a mentor for the Amherst team. Duncan met with the team to answer questions and responded to questions when he was out of the country via email. Additionally, through the team's mentors, WISE was able to take a field trip to Liberty University School of Aeronautics to further develop an understanding of drones, so thank you Duncan Gordon.
Good job, everybody, thank you. Science Fair? Science Fair, all right. Next, we have Science Fair. So these individuals were recognized, we have different levels, we have elementary, we'll do them first, those students first, then we'll do middle school winners and honorable mentions, and then we'll do our high school recognitions at the end. So first, we have an elementary student, so elementary, from Elan Elementary School, Griffin Merritt. Also from Elan, Kinley Mays. From Amherst Elementary, Abram Picar. From Madison Heights, Dominic Rucker and Alex Lopez. Also from Elan, Briel Rober. Amherst Elementary School, Michaela Napier. Temperance Elementary School, Ainsley Giles. Yeah, I did, I'm sorry. From Amalon, William Greiser. From Madison Heights, Leila Penny. An honorable mention from Elan was Ryland Tapia. And Temperance, Amelia Green, sorry, Amelia. Congratulations, so elementary. Middle School. Skylar Weeks and Olivia Tucker, Amherst Middle School. Olivia Hughes, Amherst Middle School. Art McFatter and Sophia Hadfield, Manellison Middle School. Andrew Nush and Logan Breeding, Amherst Middle School. Lila Stenit and Carolyn Fitzgerald, Amherst Middle School. Cheyenne Dernigan, Amherst Middle School. Mackenzie Campbell and Maddie White, Amherst Middle School. Amaya Lewis and Gracie Barnes, Manellison Middle School. Charlotte Tyree and Olivia Foster, Manellison Middle School. Lily Tyree and Kylie Butler, Manellison Middle School. Honorable mentions, Tristan Martin, Amherst Middle School. Renee Tyler, Amherst Middle School. Lila Bryant, Manellison Middle School. Sabrina Belant, Amherst Middle School. And Riley Cam and Elijah Thompson, Manellison Middle School. Congratulations, everyone. So I hope not, all right. From the high school, I'm going to kind of read kind of what they received here. Margot Marseille, Grand Alternate ISF finalist, first place in engineering and engineering technology. Also nominated to represent Amherst County High School at Virginia State Fair, Virginia State Science Fair. Margot? Alana Stanley, second place in medicine and health sciences. Casey Harvey, second place in earth and environmental science. Phoebe Camp, third place in chemistry. And Sam Williams and Ruger Young, recipients of the US Air Force Awards. Okay, middle school. FCCLA, is that right? So now we're talking, we want to recognize our FCCLA recent winners, folks who went down to Virginia Beach in the state competition. This is State Leadership and Recognition Conference. So we have Taylor Green, Chapter Service Project, third place in a gold medal. Izzy Carmody and Corinne Gammon, Focus on Children, third place in a gold medal. For Culinary Arts Level 3, Hazel Holbrook, second place silver, was a national qualifier. Landry Adams and Brianna Brown, National Programs in Action, fourth place, silver medal. Jordan Gallier, Classic Knife Cuts, silver medal. Leanne Spicer, Bacon and Pastry, bronze medal. And we also wanted to recognize some other students that were also a big part of this team in competition, so if you're present, please come forward. Devin Morecambe. Reagan Kaiser. Bree Ann Thacker. Rachel Bryant. Lilian Fickle. Nolan Terres. Sophie Coffey. And Robin Jewell. And Ms. Addison, do you want to say anything about these young folks here? I know I put you on the spot.
You did, that's okay. So we took 16 students down to Virginia Beach in April, and they all worked so hard the whole time. And we had eight competitors, we were really proud of how hard they worked, and came home with lots of medals, and we hope to do it next year.
All right. Next, we have our Welding Wars finalists, winners, however you want to call it. Mr. Johnson, you can come up here in a minute, but I'll start. We have Welding Level 1, we had, there are 25 participants in the Welding Wars, and this takes place in the Central Virginia area. And so a lot of our businesses go there, and they are impressed with our welders every year. And our kids walk out of here getting very good paying jobs when they graduate from Amherst County High School. So we want to thank the work they do, but also Mr. Jay for his work. So Welding 1, there are 25 participants, we had Jackson Presnel, second place, and River Johnson, third place. Welding Level 2, there were nine participants. We had Madeline Thompson, first place, Sean Pruitt, second place. Neither one of them are here tonight. Artistic welding, there were 20 entries. Kayla Slusser was first place, and I believe she's here this evening. In artistic welding, crowd favorite, there were 20 entries, and Kayla won that as well. And we have her work on display, I'm going to ask Mr. Johnson to come up and talk about that for a second, so y'all can kind of see what she did, because everybody has seen, I've been extremely impressed, but I think it's fairly impressive work, so thank you. But the work she did was just impressive and impressed the judges. I mean, to win first place in both those categories is impressive.
A lot of entries in there that were really nice, but the detailed work and working with stainless and aluminum is very difficult at any point. Hard for you to understand.
Yeah, all right, thank you, good work. Yeah, yeah. All right. Thank you. Good work. So every year, the V S B A Southern Region holds an art competition. And we had three students that art was nominated from the school system. And if you're here this evening, please come up and get your certificate. Taylor Massey. Kennedy Lang. And Annabelle Daniel.
Have you played the 24 game?
Seen it though, I didn't go good.
And finally, last but not least, we want to recognize the winner of our Math 24 competition this year. And would Knox Wilson come forward if you're here this evening? And he achieved first place in the Math 24 Elementary Competition this year. And we want to congratulate him and all he did to get us there, so. All righty, yeah. All righty, Dr. Wells, we'll move on to 3.01, Public Comment.
Yes, sir.
Currently, we have one person signed up to speak, Gloria Witt. Oh, there you are.
Busy night tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
I saw you on the back popping up every five seconds. Good job. Gloria Witt, 432 Brown Town Road, Amherst, Virginia. I wanted to weigh in on, and you've probably already made the decision, but I think I wanted to just kind of share my thoughts about whether or not the school board, we should stay or leave the Virginia School Board Association and join the School Board Member Alliance of Virginia. And why am I interested in this? It's because from doing a little bit of research, it appears as though the Virginia School Board Association is a nonpartisan organization that's been around since 1906. And it offers training, development, and policy templates to the school division in its entirety. And it has relationships with political leaders to make sure you influence the education system, et cetera. And when I looked up the School Board Member Association, I was shocked to discover that it was established in 2022. It is a conservative-leaning group that is focused on eradicating wokeism. And I would argue that without wokeism, many of us would not be having a voice in the room, particularly the women on the podium. So thank God for wokeism, but I digress. So what does the School Board Member Association of Virginia do? Well, it's new, pretty much unproven in terms of its benefits, other than offering some training and development for its individual members. So it's not a collective relationship. Each person individually pays, kind of like personal interest. And I don't understand why we would even consider joining an individual membership association when we've been preaching for years that education is a nonpartisan issue. But I digress. From what I could research, there is no policy templates, but this organization does spend a lot of time being driven by conservative values. I translate that as indoctrination. And so anyway, I wanted to kind of map out those differences, particularly for people that's not in this room. So to finalize, based on my understanding of the differences, I hope the board has already decided. I know last week you were in a private session, but my hope is that the board has come out of that meeting with a decision to maintain our relationship in Amherst County with the Virginia School Board Association. Yes, it costs $16,000, but it very well could be a false savings to break our relationship, because now someone's going to have to do this policy template work and legally review it, et cetera, which could actually drive you into hiring another resource, which would distract from the savings. So that would be my hope, that you maintain that relationship. Thank you for the opportunity to map it out for the folks that's online. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So that's the only person who has signed up tonight. Is anyone from the audience who'd like to approach the board? Okay, step forward.
Hey, y'all. Hey, y'all. Sam Soger, District 2 parent. Y'all, I would also like to come before you tonight to say, please stay in the V S B A. It feels like a through line that I've been coming to these meetings for years now. And I'm honestly like the only parent that comes to meetings every month for years now. No one else could say that. Some parents come here and there. And maybe that's worth nothing, but if it's worth anything to y'all, please just stay in the V S B A. We could work this other stuff out. To me, I say the same things over and over again, so I don't think I necessarily, you all know my points about this. I'll even add in like we should be working for the farm-to-table stuff. That's as important as anything, that the children, you know, that's a great issue for us, you know? The apple juice, for instance, that the kids drink is made from apples from China. You know what I mean? We have apple orders here in Amherst. Let's make that work, y'all. We should be working real hard for something like that. That's the kids, you know, it's what they're drinking, you know what I mean? Again, these textbooks, I talked about the textbooks last month. I really hope also, as well as staying in V S B A, if you could please get these new reading textbooks. Textbooks are 22 years old, we heard. And so as you can see, what's one more year? No, the textbooks are like falling apart. Like, please, we, you know, let's just get the new textbooks. It's fine. It'll be fine. The textbooks, I assure you, there's nothing controversial about race in them, you know what I mean? There's no, there's nothing indoctrinating. Like, I have this on good authority. Don't worry about what's in the reading textbook. Worry about what's in the apple juice. You know what I'm saying? Even once we were treated to an excellent treatise on the dangers of microplastics. I'm just saying, like, there's validity in a sense. Thank you, Mr. Porter, you know, for that kind of stuff. But to get out of the V S B A, it feels like the through line is, y'all used to talk about this. African-American education was going to be mandated as a, you know, a requirement in Virginia schools. And that's where, when I started watching these meetings, the consternation had started. So please don't worry. If you truly believe in diversity, yeah, let's learn about all this stuff. You know what I mean? All the good stuff. That is all very reasonable for especially high school students to be learning about. I appreciate y'all for the work you do. Let's go, Lancers. Peace and love.
Thank you, sir. Is anyone else from the audience who'd like to approach the board? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on.
Sir, Mr. Chair, next we have 4.01, which is Policy. This is a second, this is a second read. And we presented this policy to you last month. Again, majority, really all of these were very minimal changes and adjustments based on typographical things, put it most part, and some updates with code.
Board, if you had a chance to look at the policies? Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question I'd like to ask before we move forward. It's just about policy G B L A. It's fairly simple. All the rest of them, I thought, were pretty straightforward. G B L A, Third-Party Complaints Against Employees. I just wanted to know that it says in the superintendent will establish regulations for processing third-party complaints against employees, and it looks like that's optional. So I was just wondering if that's something that we were going to pursue, or is that something we already do?
I believe we already have the regulation in place. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that would stay then. Okay, and then the things that are being struck out after that are just like time expectancy, sort of gives an average amount of time to respond. What is your recommendation? Is that something that by taking out that time reference, that would cause this to be delayed?
Now, I personally, I think with the time reference, it would allow staff or third-party complaints that don't meet that 15 days, they didn't realize it, that they wouldn't be heard if they were not within the 15-day window. As my understanding, that was struck. So I think this just allows people more time to file those complaints.
But there's no limitation on that?
I'd have to double-check one more time, Ms. Thompson. I'm not aware of any limitations. We could place a limitation. Again, we can add a, we can add a line in there, could say a date if you want, if the board so chose.
Mr. Chair, I guess my recommendation would be to approve the policies tonight and maybe let that one go to the Policy Committee, just to give Dr. Wells and the staff some time to talk about that timeframe.
And you're looking for a statute that, you know, after a certain amount of time, they can't appeal. Is that correct?
Right, and that might be just an attorney question. I don't know.
The reason the V S B A struck it was, we just looked, Ms. McHenry pulled a note, said there's no legal requirement for it. So they struck the timeframe. We can set a timeframe whatever we want. If we want to stay at 15 days, we could, or we could go too longer. So if you want, I'd be glad to sit down and talk to legal counsel and get a recommendation.
Well, I guess my recommendation would be that we approve it tonight, and then if we need to follow up on it, we can. Is that all right? I make a motion that we approve tonight, policies and G B L A to be looked at with superintendent and the attorney later.
Second. Any other discussion, board, on any of the policies? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
So next we have 4.02, Consider Approval of Secondary English Reading Textbook Recommendation. I know there were some questions last month, and we contacted the state up. Finally received an answer this morning from the state. I forwarded that to you, and I'll say you should have a copy of that at your place regarding their response. To summarize it, there's nothing in that presidential executive order that would impact curriculum, textbooks, or anything along those lines. So there would be no reason to fear that that could cause us, if we adopted the books, and there was something there that would cause any recourse in that capacity, so.
Board, if you had a chance to look at the information? Can I get a motion?
So a question, Dr. Wells, so the committee is recommending H M H?
Yes, sir.
And the three or five year?
We were recommended a five. The question from the board, looking at the financial, since there is no issue with the executive order or things of that nature, from a financial standpoint, you're better off going with the five than the three, just because of the amount of dollars that were associated with. If you did the three, then you had to go again. It would be a cost more for the division to do that.
Didn't we, did we ask you to contact them to find out if we did the three, what it would be? If we wanted to extend that?
We believe we forwarded that information.
You did, okay.
So if we were to do the three, it would be initial cost of $255,062.91. Send bid to five, it's $355,727. The cost per student after the contract will be $65,895. So that we have to pay that additional in there. So let me find, do I write an enter? Make sure I get this for you. So the cost of a digital base will be additional $65,895.60 for student access. And I'm trying to find the rest. Let me flip it over.
Is that per year?
Yes, sir. That's per year. So it adds that $130,000 additional, so.
So $30,000 savings.
$30,000 savings if you don't do that. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
I feel like we should go ahead and go with what the administrative team has requested. I know there was some discussion over the three or five year, but I like the idea of saving the money. And I think it's, if we felt like it's a good enough product for three, then we keep it for the five. So I make a motion that we enter in a contract with their number one pick, H M H Intro Literature, for five years for a total cost of $355,727.14.
Okay, we have a motion? And a second? Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Dr. Wells.
Thank you. Next, we have Consent Agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move for approval of the Consent Agenda.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion on the Consent Agenda? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Dr. Wells, 6.01.
Yeah, I would like to, if I can find my user vehicle.
Ms. Rhodes?
I would like to take a moment to introduce Ms. Rhodes, Kristen Rhodes, and go on up.
So Kristen, since she did the consent, approved the consent agenda tonight, will be the newest school administrator at AEC. And so she has 23 years of experience, but is a teacher and a leader. She has a Bachelor of Science from Liberty University, a Master's in Special Education from Old Dominion University, and a Master's in Educational Leadership from the University of Lynchburg. She's been a special education teacher in Lynchburg and in Bedford County. And she's also been at the Fort Hill Community School in Lynchburg, served there as the lead teacher. And then she has spent the past, what, two years? Past two years at T C Miller as the principal of T C Miller Elementary School in Lynchburg. So we welcome her to Amherst County Public Schools and welcome aboard, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm honored to be here in Amherst County. And I'm look forward to working with Amherst Education Center with our families and our students and our teachers, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Well, yeah, I guess we will. Mr. Neighbors?
You can sit here.
I think you'd make him stand.
You can stand.
So you can have, you can hold it, you can spike the mic. So Mr. Neighbors, again with your approval tonight, you also have approved him to be the Chief the chief academic officer for Amherst County Public Schools, and he's been with us long enough that you should never, not going to have to do introductions there, but I will let Mr. Neighbors say a few words at the podium.
Good evening, board. Just want to express my appreciation of your support this evening. Obviously, I love being here in Amherst. I'm excited to continue to be a part of Team Amherst, looking forward to working with each of you on moving us forward with our academic program. But thank you again for your support. I appreciate it.
Next, we have our student reps. So Mr. Carver, Ms. Brown, this is your last official board meeting with us. You can always come back and visit. This will be your last official meeting. The floor is yours.
Good evening. On May 5th, we had our band concert at the high school, which was a great success. On May 6th, the choral concert took place, featuring the chorus classes and both show choirs. And last night, we had our CNA graduation, which I was a part of. We received our red cords, a pin, a white rose, and our certificate. On May 8th and 9th, Folly Beach will take place, which is the independent study that some of the theater kids have been working on for a while. A lot of hard work has gone into it, so if you have the time, I recommend you check it out. And on May 19th, the AMEs will take place, which is basically an award ceremony for all of the actors who've been a part of the theater this school year. It is a free event, and food will be there, catered by our culinary arts class. And lastly, I just want to say thank you for this opportunity. I've learned a lot this year from being a student representative, from public speaking to getting to know more about my fellow classmates. So thank you all for all that you do, and thank you for the honor of serving as a student representative this year.
Thank you.
And building off what she said, we've had several successful ceremonies so far and counting, like the CNA she mentioned last night. We've also had Golden A happen, where we got to honor a profound educator, and then Golden TASS as well for NHS. Next Wednesday, we actually have our senior awards, so that'll be exciting. I think that might be the last one before we keep moving. So this year, prom is May 17th, themed Nashville, so we are enjoying that, and I don't know if people follow the theme, but maybe they'll wear their cowboy boots to prom. Spring sports are fighting for playoffs right now, I know, and we have a bunch of senior nights coming up. I think girls soccer's actually tomorrow. So we're proud of them and their dedication to making Amherst proud. It's exam season, so it's really stressful, but I know today at least, we've had two different AP exams and SOL testing and all the different things throughout the high school, and so we might have to be quiet walking through the halls, but we can see the finish line, and that's exciting. We have 15 more days until graduation, the 23rd. We're excited. And with that, there's a lot of senior events that are coming up, just spending time together before we all part ways to college and whatever comes next. So that's going to be senior tie-dying shirts. We had like cinnamon rolls for seniors who paid their dues, just different little things like that that's exciting and keep us coming to school, because you know how senioritis can get for some of us, so it's, it's encouraging to come to school and stuff like that. So I was going to also talk about, I didn't know if you guys would be curious with the, from the student's perspective of how lunch has changed for us, and so it's very similar, except the lines are on the other side of the hallway. And so now we're all seeing in our classroom too, so that's a little bit different, but I think it's actually good as well, because you're in, you're eating amongst your peers who you're also working with in class. So that's different than seeing other people, and it's also different faces. We usually sit with the same people every day the whole year, and now it's a switch-up. Now we're seeing new faces that we wouldn't have necessarily spoke to before, and so I think that's a good thing. I know it's not permanent, but I think there's some positives to take out of it. And then lastly, I'd also like to thank you all. This opportunity's been awesome, and the grace you've had with our schedules. They're so busy, it's just a blessing, and it's been great to get to know you all, and I'm just thankful for this opportunity and hope to be back in some board meetings in the future.
So tonight, this is your last official, you get the tape. We have to keep the stands.
Thank you so much.
You put that on your wall.
Thank you so much.
Is that your certificate?
Yeah, I got mine, yes.
So in case I've missed it, what are your plans come after graduation?
Do you want to go first? You go ahead.
I'm going to attend the University of Virginia School of Nursing.
All right. There you go.
I'm not going too far. I'm going to be right at Liberty in the fall and studying psychology, hoping to be a chaplain for the Army, and maybe do some Christian counseling, so.
Awesome. Awesome. Thank you.
Will you be in the ROTC program?
I'm still considering that. I've talked to officers, so it's on the table still, but not sure yet.
If you're going for the chaplain side, you ought to go ahead and get it done while you're.
Right, right.
You get it taken care of.
Yeah. Well, thank you guys for all that you've done this year. It's, it's awesome to hear y'all's interaction with the other students, both at high school and the, the lower graded schools. So it's, it's, it's awesome to see that interaction, and the information you guys bring to us from these schools is, is very beneficial to us. We love hearing about all the projects coming and going, and we try to take advantage of everyone we can. But good luck to you guys in the future. Enjoy these next couple of weeks. You know, most people will tell you, there's a lot of people in this, your class that you won't ever see again, but hopefully you'll be lucky enough to see some who stick around for 40 years. So that's, it's always a great thing. So good luck to you guys.
Thank you. It's our pleasure.
Thank you.
And just for me, just thank you both, and we wish you the best, and if you ever need anything, you know where we are and reach out, okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Dr. Wells?
So next, we have administrative services, and first on the list is a construction project, so I do want to update you there. Mr. Rhodes is going to spend time showing you where we are. We're not where we want it to be at this point in the year. Matter of fact, we wanted to be having our grand opening Saturday initially, but winter hit, and then some other delays we've hit, and trying to make things right. We want it right. I don't want to bring people in if it's not where it needs to be. We will be there, but it's not going to be May 31st. It's probably going to be like, probably a week, maybe two weeks off. So I don't want to put a date out there right now. Instead of May 31st, it might be a week or two later, but we don't, there's no timeframe. I know some of y'all have vacation plans, so we will work around your vacation plans, because once we get into June and July, it's no reason to just go off a date, just go off a date. We looked at May 31st because it was close to graduation and getting our students that have just graduated and stuff before they took off, when they're, they left us to come back in and be able to experience it. But if we go into June or July, then we will pick a date that suits the board and some of our other people who wanted to be with it. So I think we will have a much better feeling, I guess, in the, probably about two weeks, we will have a better understanding. You know, we're getting ready to pay at the parking lot now, the finishes inside are happening, but I don't want to bring, invite, you know, the community up there if things aren't where we're ready to show them off, right? And we want to make this a good experience and, and get the best out of it. So we have postponed the May 31st date. Again, we will work with you to find a date that is conducive for everyone and move forward from that point in time. But I will say sometime after the middle of June into early July is what we will be looking at from a timeframe perspective. We can go later if we need to for y'all's schedules, but I just want to have it where when we do it, we do it right, and we can get the community in, so.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions on that before I let Mr. Rhodes show off what we have, what do have? All right. Roll with Mr. Rhodes.
All righty, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Like Dr. Wells said, we're right on the borderline to getting where we need to be, but we had some pretty good discussions late last week and early this week with the contract and amongst Dr. Ho, Dr. Wells, myself, and Mr. Crawford, Dr. Crawford, excuse me. But anyway, we want to do the right thing. We did this one time, we want to make it right, so let's take a tour. So actually, this is about, about 5:50 this morning, and I was up at the high school, and I can see the sunrise in the morning, so we're getting up and going, all the lights in the interior, on the cafeteria side are done, just like I said, looking through the cafeteria windows. This is on a panoramic view of the parking lot, like Dr. Wells said. The, you can see the curb and gutter on the left-hand side, right there in the middle, somewhere where the dumpster sits right now. They've been installing the, the water aspects where the leads come off the roof to capture that and treat it, and then it goes on down into the, the pond below, so they've actually completed that today. And probably tomorrow or first part of next week, they will start doing the curb and guttering on the backside of the parking lot, to the right of that gravel pile you see and coming around that way. So we're making progress there. Sidewalks are in, and to the left there is a sidewalk going up to the main entrance, and then the right-hand side here is on the parking lot side, going down by the auditorium. And again, as, as things have transpired, there are little things that, like in the main entrance, some things they've got to correct. We weren't unhappy with the product we got, and you know, so again, some of these things are going to have to be redone a little bit, and that's why we're having some of the delays we're having. Coming in the front door, this is the, the middle of the corridor, as far as the middle of the cafeteria, basically where the students, where they will come in from parents drop off and that type of thing. As you can see, the, the lights, they'll be in hopefully first part of next week. Some of the cables that came in were too short. So little things like that has caused us to delay, but anyway, it's a significant improvement for where we were last month at this time. On the right-hand side, you can see, again, looking back from the old part of the school, back up to the main entrance, say probably 90% of the floor's in, and you know, beautiful floor, look throughout the building, so we keep them all covered up as the construction continues. The, the floor guys and Jameson, who's been doing a brugge job, keeping them covered as the floors lead, they're right behind them, putting covering on top of them so they don't get damaged. This is looking at Main Street this morning, again, about 6 o'clock. They turned the lights on through there last night, actually, or yesterday afternoon, and I see, we still see it got some tiles, got to put in the ceiling, but this is looking basically from the cafeteria corner right there, looking down Main Street, and then a little bit further down Main Street next to auditorium, looking down to the old entrance to the, the two doors, sitting into the hallway, go back hallway to the gym hallway. So some of the laminate is going up on the cabinets you see in the hall for display cases, for trophies and other various items that the high school will be here. TVs, sitting areas for the public and those type of things as well, but the finishing laminate is going up on there as, right now. Above that, you'll see it like about a three-foot wide gypsum or sheet rock panel above that. That is being finished as we speak, and that will be painted a burgundy, and then you have a gray line above that, and then you have the black ceiling above that as well. To the left, we had a little excitement this morning with a little water line issue at the high school, and while I was up there, Pittsburgh stage was there getting ready to leave, and they showed me a brief, like 10-minute operation on this new light panel we have here on the left, and they will be back here in a few weeks to give formal training to all parties involved, but pretty slick light panel. They were going to play with it yesterday. It's amazing what the lights on the stage can do and the power this thing has. Right, on the picture on the right-hand side, it's just lights from the wall pointing toward the stage. They were, they were going to test them yesterday afternoon while we were walking through. And then again, this is just standing back where the flat part of the auditorium, while we're looking at lights and make, making some changes in the lighting aspect up front, behind the, the lights, about 17 lights across the catwalk up top above those sound panels up there, and they're having to make some adjustment to that to get the lighting right, and so we were just testing some things yesterday afternoon. We talked earlier, referenced to the, the cafeteria, so Wendy and Ms. Klein from Child Nutrition and I met right before spring break to get a tentative game plan of what we wanted to do, and our maintenance team, we came in there Monday morning about 6 o'clock, moved all the serving lines out of the existing kitchen over to the old, old gym over there, and our custodians had actually already cleaned out all the tables and that miscellaneous things, so like Dr. Wells earlier, in two and a half days, our maintenance staff moved, actually that morning, moved all these things out. Moore's Electric Company came in and basically two and a half days, and rewired everything from the existing cafeteria or serving line area over to the new gym, and it was up and operational. And Wendy and I talked several days, several times throughout the week, she came in, tested everything, and then when the students arrived back on Monday morning, we never missed a beat and kept on getting it. So I think the cafeteria staff has been happy, the school staff has been happy, and according to Mr. Carver, you know, they, again, the students are happy as well. So this went pleasantly surprised very well. Regarding the, the old cafeteria, we're about, like I said, about four weeks into it now. They started the Monday of spring break. As you can see, they came in, the first thing they did was remove the ceiling tiles, start doing those type of things, start digging up the floor. What you see here on the right-hand side is a, the new restroom, that, that wall will be tore down, that restroom will look like the bathroom that is out in the new addition. It'll be 16 stalls, open concept, just like we did out in the hallway there. Over here on the left-hand side, I'm actually standing in the corner of the freezer, where you see the floor duct up on the left there, that whole long stretch is the new freezer. The area to the left is the kitchen. The area to the right, where you see the gentleman up there actually installing HVAC duct as we speak, is for the new classrooms and stuff. So a lot of the HVAC duct is installed, and they should actually start building walls for the new classrooms, hopefully sometime next week or the week after. As you know, we're in a very tight deadline for the kitchen move this, this summer. On the left-hand side, the fieldhouse, can't forget about Mr. Fieldhouse back here. The HVAC unit has been set, that was done last week, and, and the bathrooms there. The partitions are in, they haven't been installed. Obviously, this, you know, sort of got put on the backburner a little bit as we were pressing very hard inside the main school to get that ready, and so they still have been working on this, but most of our effort has been focused on the, the main part of the school. This is looking, the left picture on the left is in the concession stand in the fieldhouse, and on the right is just the mechanic room in the fieldhouse as well. So what's coming up? Complete phase one. I truly anticipate probably the, the second week of June, we'll be, you know, pretty much done. Some of the academy workers got to come in. The big part of it is getting it cleaned. They've had a cleaning crew and did some preliminary cleaning over the last, you know, week or two, but as you know, in a project this big and areas, we want to make sure it's clean and clean good one time, so that's going to take a little bit of time. Again, I talked about beginning the CMU, the masonry walls in the classroom, and part of phase two, and again, continuing with the kitchen part in phase two. I think, you know, here in the next week or so, actually, we start putting some hood systems in there as well. Next Thursday, they plan on pouring the concrete where we've already cut up in the new kitchen area, so that's progressing very well right now. And that's where we're at. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
So what, what is the timeframe of when they were supposed to complete this project? On the contract?
This part of it right here was springtime of 2025, is where we're, initially, we're talking about spring of 25. So we're, we're right there where we need to be. Obviously, with any construction, there are going to be delays and challenges you have to meet. Again, you know, as y'all well know, this is not like we're building McDonald's all over the United States. This is the one and only time they built this type of thing, for this type of building. So there's been some challenges for supplies and things like that, but we're on target. We had an aggressive, you know, we wanted to try to get it used this year for the seniors and, and that aspect, but they were looking for the spring of 2025, which we're in that window.
Right. So, so they're not, they're not behind as far as what the contract says? Is that correct?
Contractually, we're fine. We just had, they just had, earlier when we started the project, we're looking at, if things went great, we'd be done earlier this month or today, right? But due to some of the issues back in January when it was snowing 10 degrees, it kind of put them back a little bit.
Sure. So in the contract, so let's say they were behind schedule, so they were supposed to, I don't know what the due date, because I mean, there is a date that it's supposed to be done, right? The contract says, let's just say it's May 31st. Do we have anything in the contract that holds them accountable if they're behind schedule on that?
Yeah, there were some liquidated damages, you know, mentioned in the contract as well.
Okay, but we're not at the point where we're looking at that?
No, sir.
Because we're not looking to go past the date.
Right.
Okay. Could you let us know what that date is?
Sure.
At some point?
Yes.
Thank you.
Board, anything else?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I didn't see any chairs in the auditorium in that picture.
That is correct. There, as we speak, they're getting ready to get put in. Actually, there would have been more in there, not just, you know, what happened was, back when they poured the concrete, back last year sometime, they had to cover the concrete up for a cure, put brand spanking new plastic out of the box on it, laid it on the concrete, and when it did, some of the chemicals or whatever in the plastic adhered to the concrete put brand spanking new plastic out of the box on it, laid it on the concrete. And when it did, some of the chemicals or whatever in the plastic adhere to the concrete itself. So when they peeled it up, you know, months later, there were brown marks throughout it, almost like, if you will, like a leopard skin type, just periodic lines to it. So fast forward through all the construction process, got to the part where we get ready to put the seats down. We looked at the contract, looked at it, and architect looked at it. It's like, hey, let's go ahead and stain the floor underneath the seats so that when you come in and look, you won't see this pattern, you know, random pattern on the floor. We thought it would look better appearance. So boom, they stained it, looks great, we're ready to go. Chair installers come in last week, they lay out the floor, put painter tape across, they stain, do the little patterns, start drilling all the holes for the 770, for 740 seats in the bottom of it, start peeling the painter's tape up. And guess what happened? Now we have tape marks in the stain, which, so they turned around this week and actually, two days ago, and went in through there, remopped everything, got a floor scrubber, scrubbed everything back out and repainted underneath the chairs again. So it's those little type of things. So the TJ distributors, the chair guns have been in here. If you look at like on the left-hand side of the auditorium, those actually, the frames have been put in place, not secured, but put in place and they were working their way around. And then we saw this, we were like, so that's, we were hoping, you know, to use it for next Wednesday night for the senior awards. That's one of the things. And those are the type of things that are have sort of pushed us back a little bit, you know, unexpected things like that.
So as far as like the, all the chairs are in?
Yeah.
We have everything we need?
Yes, sir.
We're not waiting for anything?
No, the chairs have been in in the connects boxes down below the football field and the junior parking lot. They've been there for several months. Yeah, they were delivered months ago. It's just a matter of the construction process. You know, we can't put the chairs in because we had to put the sound devices up in the ceiling.
Correct.
So you know, you have to do the above stuff before you do below stuff. They've been here for months.
And the kitchen, are we going to be waiting on any equipment like freezers?
No, sir.
That equipment? All that stuff is in-house?
Yeah, that was ordered months ago. We purchased that stuff months ago. So it's ready to go when we're ready to go. Construction's ready to go.
We just need to give them the ship.
Ship date?
Yep.
Okay. That's all I have?
Okay. Board, anything else?
Quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
I know you were frustrated with the concrete in the auditorium and all that you went through. I guess my simple question came to my mind is if they stained it and the paint tape took up the stain, how durable is that going to be for us?
Well, I think one of the things that the stain really didn't have a lot of time to cure, they put it down, basically two days later, we're back on it again with tape. And so I think that's one of the issues. And also, the company had, you know, this is one of the few times they've experienced that. hindsight 2020, let's, you know, let's go through with tape first, get all your patterns down, drill your tap holes and stuff. Because what they do is they put the pattern down, they make a template, they go through and drill the holes for each seat, all 770 of them off this template, then they peel them back up and start drilling the grill holes. And so hindsight 2020, we should have done that first, then come back, stained it, and then come back and put the seats on. So it's, it is durable. It's a Sherwood where your product, the paint products we use throughout the whole school and through the school system. So it's just, I think the biggest thing was it really didn't have time to cure in a, you know, let's say, two days before we start putting tape on it and then peeling it up.
I guess I'm wondering, if you go back to the original, what caused the issue was when they put the plastic over the concrete as it's curing, do they have any, do we have any legal way of saying that it's their responsibility to come in and give us a durable floor? Can they put epoxy or something on it that we're not going to have to repaint it in five years?
Yeah, you know, the stain is, I forgot what the warranty is on the stain itself. It's pretty durable, pretty long. Will you have to re-treat it? Yeah, possibly. And what they were talking about is like, when it comes time to probably replace the seats years down the road, we would look at also at the time to do that as well. So, you know, from a liability or responsibility standpoint, again, it's from a construction process, putting plastic over concrete is happens all the time, particularly in the, I think that floor was poured in the early winter, wintertime. It's a normal process for it to help cure. And so it's not, they didn't do anything wrong, different than they've done several times before. On this floor, like the parts where the aisles are and the carpet's going to be, no big deal. But we were debating on whether or not we were even going to do it. It was on the borderline where we could do it because you could see it. And we were just concerned about when you had the house lights up and you look down, you see this, you know, the sort of brown color in different areas, you know, what's that? So we were trying to do the right thing, you know, and cover it and be done. So that's the problem we ran into. But they didn't do anything wrong, anything they didn't do. They did the same thing back in the field house back there when it was poured.
And they don't know what caused it?
It's just some reaction between the plastic and the concrete. Again, I sat there and watched them pull the plastic out of the box. It's not like it was used plastic. I watched them pull it out of the box, put it right down there, pure white, you know, pure clear plastic, and it had a reaction.
Well, I appreciate everything you're doing. I just don't want to have to come up with a big price tag item in five years.
Trust me. Trust me. And we, Dr. Wells, Dr. Hodges, myself, we have this conversation all the time. We're, we're just like grand opening. We're not happy about it. Contract's not happy, and architecture's not happy about it. But I know, and I told you before, when I do something, I want to do it right one time and be done with it instead of doing halfway and come back 10 times. So if it costs more money, let's do it right or take our time and do it right. And that's what I told the contractors yesterday. Let's slow down, you know, don't take your really foot off the gas pedal, but let's think about what we're doing, let's make conscious decisions and do the right thing. And at the end of the day, we will have a great product one time instead of trying to have a great product in a lot of, in a lot of fatigue and everything in between. So trying to get it right.
Thank you, Mr. Rooks.
Yes, ma'am.
Board, yes, sir.
Yeah. So I don't want to belabor at that point, but it is their responsibility to make sure it's right, right? Because even though it wasn't their fault.
Yeah.
It's their responsibility to make sure that they're providing us a product that's acceptable to us.
Not arguing that point whatsoever.
Yeah, that's right. I just wanted to point that out.
Right.
It is their responsibility to make sure we have a good product and something that we shouldn't have to come back and fix later. So hopefully, as you said, we're going to get, you know, 25, 30 years out of it before it has to be redone.
Yes, sir. Exactly.
I understand the construction thing. I live it myself. And so I can appreciate everything you're going through. So.
Thank you. Okay. Board, anything else?
Mr. Rooks, I would like to say, you know, thank you for not settling. And let's say, let's get it right. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, Dr. Wells.
Next, we have just an update on the Verizon cell tower. We have sent our recommendations back to Verizon. They're with their legal team. They have not returned back to us yet for negotiations aspect. So we're still in that limbo land. Just one that we haven't, we're just waiting on Verizon to get back to us. So once they do, we'll look at what they've come back with and then we'll see if it's something we agree with. But we did up the ante a little bit to make sure we were being compensated appropriately.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
At what point are we going to consider having a community discussion?
Yeah, I wanted to make sure that we could come to agreement on what it's going to be because if we don't get to that agreement, then it's a new point. So once we get contractually, we will start finding, trying to find a time to do that. But if they can't meet our, we can't come to an agreement with the finances part of it, then, you know, I didn't want to schedule until we had that agreement worked out between the two.
That's reasonable. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you talking about having something else besides the public hearing that we have to have anyway for the county?
No, they wanted to do the balloon test so people could see it from the neighborhood as part of that public hearing. It was, so the public hearing would be held at Manellson. But the balloon test would be out back. You could see the height of it and all that so you know kind of what you're getting into before.
But as a county, during the process, you have to have a public hearing anyway. So maybe just have it too.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
At this point, do you feel like anyone in the community is actually aware that we are even looking at it? Has that information been put out on the website? Or is it just from us talking here internally?
It's just from us talking right now through that because we haven't come up with, there's no, we're considering it, but we don't until, I don't want to go there until we have an idea of what the numbers would be. If they, again, if they can't agree, come to an agreement with us, we can't reach that agreement, then it's a new point. So I didn't want to really start putting that out there. I'd be glad to. But we hadn't done that yet. Well, I was really hoping they would have returned that agreement by now, but they haven't. So we'll be glad to start putting information out there about the possibility of it at Manellson Middle School if the board so desires. We can start doing some, doing some social media aspects of it if you wanted to, just to put it out there that we're considering. But there's no, we don't have a date yet.
I know people have approached me asking when it's going in. So it's.
Well, I personally would like to hear from the community, you know, because it may be something that they need and they want, might be something that they don't. So.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know what the board's pleasure is, but I do think that's an important aspect.
Well, you know, would the board like for him to go ahead and publicize it around Manellson? Or, because I mean, I know people already have already, like I said, approached me about it. So it's not a secret. It's out there.
Mr. Terry?
Yes, sir.
My only concern with putting it out, and it's not that I want to try to hide anything. I don't want to give everybody false hope that it may not be going in or I, I guess either way, they're going to find out. And I know I've been approached by, that is, I'll, I should be able to see it from my house. So I do talk to the people in neighborhood about it. So, and I know there's a terrible dead zone there. There is. And I haven't got any negative feedback yet, but putting it out in the, into the public and getting people worried about something that may not happen, I don't know if that's, it's worth it or not.
Yeah.
I feel it's probably a little premature this time, too.
Okay.
Not in my district, but Eric's, if you feel that way, I mean, I definitely feel that way. Because we've got a ways to go for this to, to work its way through the system.
That works for me. Okay. We'll hold off now then.
Again, if we get the numbers back from them, we can reach an agreement, then we can start moving it forward so people know it's actually possible based on public hearings and all that type of aspect.
Okay. Cool. Thank you.
All right.
Next.
So next we have 7.02, just proposed revisions to the school policy manual. This was the wellness policy J H C F. I know we approved, the board approved J H C F when we went through the federal monitoring of our child nutrition program. There was one line that they wanted, they said we had to have back in. So all I did is I took that one line and put it back in, didn't change anything else to the policy. And Ms. McNary is pulling that up now. And so it's under food sold outside the school meal programs. So we basically, they wanted us to strike during the school day excluding concessions. The rest of it, there were no changes. They just recommended or really told us we needed to do that. And that would be, make us in alignment with federal and state requirements under child nutrition. So I would ask that nothing else was changed in the policy. You've already approved the policy. This is just what they were, when they did their review, that's what they said we had to change.
Okay. But that goes against what we said we needed to have that in there. Because if we don't have the exclusion for concessions, then is that not holding your concessions to the same standard?
No, what they were saying was that during the school day part, since we don't sell concessions during school, during the 7:40, at the high school, 7:45 to 2:45, the concession stands aren't open. So that's why they said that after school, after school hours, it doesn't apply. Again, that's what the lady from the USDA told us. So that's what I brought back to you.
So this does not apply to anything after the bell rings to go home?
Right after your regular hours. Correct. Because they're not required to be there during that time. It's my understanding.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I know this is just a first read, but as we're looking at it, if that is the intent of it, then I think we need to say that. Because I think that's absent.
Okay.
I don't know if that would be permissible or not, but right now it's a blanket statement.
I'll be glad to take it back. And they were just asking, I mean, again, from our child nutrition, we just need to get one approval. So let me.
Can you help me understand what is it that they want?
They, she just basically, again, I can't speak for her, but I just know when we had our meeting, that when they did the follow-up meeting regarding everything, they just said that that, she gave us this back and said, if you do that strike through, you're good. I said, okay. And tried to, but.
So I guess, does the policy only applies to food served between start to finish bells? It doesn't include food served or sold after the bell rings to send people home?
And programs, right?
Okay. So.
I can put.
There's, you know, I think what Ms. Thompson is looking at is there's no, you know, finite timeframe that that thing is. And if you read it, you know, it's school meal programs shall meet the standards. It kind of implies that it would be everything, but it's.
Where does it say it's only for during the day? Because that's what that line said.
Yeah, he's, he's just going.
I'm just kind of paraphrasing what she told us when I was in that meeting with her a month, month and a half ago. Let me make contact with Kim and Child Nutrition and let me make contact with the rep, the person who did our evaluation and just make sure that's, if we put that in, we're going to be good. And then I can bring it back to you.
But that's what that says, right? Because that says what they asked us to strike was during the school day.
Right.
Correct.
So but if you go back and ask to put that back in.
Let me, let me get the clarification. But that's just what she said, if you strike that line, it would meet where they are. But if we need to put, if we can put a timeframe in there and that meets it, then I'm fine with that. Let me, but let me.
And maybe ask her about concessions.
Yeah.
You know, at the sports games.
Mr. Terry, yeah. I'm just reading it. It's like, okay, she had said, or the comment was made about only during the school day from bell to bell. And that's exactly what they took out. And they said by taking that out, it would also include the school day and concessions. But we've also excluded concessions, which specifically said excluded concessions.
I'm not arguing the point. I'm just telling you what they relayed to me. So.
You see the concern, just what you can come up with.
I'll find, I'll figure it out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll get you something during the month. So hopefully in June, you can see it will be good to go. How's that?
Thanks, sir.
All right. I understand.
7.03, Dr. Wells?
7.03. Again, I just wanted to summarize the meeting we had last week regarding V S B A or school board membership. And so the board at that meeting opted to maintain membership in the V S B A. But then also had the option if board members wanted to join the S B M A, then they could let Ms. McNary and myself know and we could take care, we could make sure membership is taken care of for those board members who would like to join the S B M A. So we are maintaining full membership in V S B A. But again, individual board members may join the S B M A. That was the consensus or this, that was the discussion of the board. I just wanted to make sure that, since that was not an open meeting that we, or in this type of meeting, that that was relayed.
Okay. I believe that's where we ended up. Is the board, is that?
One other addition to that is that we had decided to not continue with the $500 for the attorney.
For the attorney fees.
Fees for the V S B A.
V S B A. Yes, sir.
Okay.
And just one comment, that was an open meeting. It's different.
Yeah, it's open meeting, but it wasn't in this.
I didn't want someone to take what you're thinking it was a closed meeting.
Yes, ma'am. Sorry for misspeaking.
That's okay.
Our work session.
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
And then the last I have is student suspensions for April. It's a regular report. So, and I'll say Dr. Hodges is not here tonight because he has a stepson who's graduating college in Bozeman, Montana. And he's just in a picture from Bozeman all day today, and I'm a little jealous. So anyhow, that's why he's not here this evening.
More power to him. Okay. Dr. Wells, eight?
Next we have finance, Mr. Connage.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Before you tonight are your April financial reports. So we are steadily wrapping things up, closing out, monitoring revenues and expenditures to close out this year. I am going to sort of flip my normal script and start on the expenditure side tonight and go to our object code summary. You're going to see some overages, some that just appeared, and I do want to talk about those. On page one, under the 3120 professional services, you will see that that is over budget by 103,805. And that is attributed to contracted direct services to our students that we had expensed, and it's still pending Medicaid reimbursement. expensed, and it's still pending Medicaid reimbursement. We had discussed that during the budget retreat, and some of the obstacles we have in getting that to go through their system, we have not given up, but we also didn't spend that money not having some Plan B, knowing that there was maybe some timing challenges on that. So while it's not in the same object code, we do, we did know that we had some positions that were vacant the whole year, we had long-term subs in them, and that created some of the savings, that if we had to use that, we could. If you look on page five of that same report, you'll see that by the major category and instructional function, we are still in good standing, we're not over budget. If the funding comes in this year, that's great, we will be able to do an appropriation, even if it comes in in July, we could still recognize that revenue. If not, it would just get pushed into the following year, and it would be revenue, additional revenue to that budget. There are some other overages that aren't as substantial in the areas of like grounds, janitorial, transportation, supplies, everything's costing more. It has been an ongoing issue of some of the things we addressed in the budget, and we have the fuel savings, there's excess in the fuels that can cover that, and again, by major category, we are good. Now to the revenue, we have a new revenue source that's not reflected in the reports at this time, and that's because last week, when the governor signed off on the Virginia State Budget Bill amending the biennial budget, there was a new funding line for bonus payments, and it was providing Amherst with $427,457, and that was to fund SOQ-funded positions for a $1,000 bonus per FTE. So next month, we would be bringing to you a supplemental appropriation to allocate those funds, to appropriate them for that purpose, as well as a budget transfer request to fund the non-SOQ-funded positions. If it approved, it is our intent to issue the bonus payments in the end of the month in June, we would get it approved in June, and then be able to issue the payments to our employees on the May, on the June payroll, and we would be prorating the bonus for part-time employees. So we wanted to give you a heads up of what our intent is, because it is a really short timeframe to get everything turned around, but I'll take any questions you may have.
Board, yes, sir.
So I have a question on the object code 6030, it's, I'm sorry, 6040, online software instructional, looks like we have about 104,000 left in that line?
Yes, sir. I would have to, honestly, I'd have to dig into it, we have a lot of softwares.
That's why I'm questioning, that doesn't seem right to me.
Some of them, we do, they do the timing of them, it'll, it crosses fiscal years, and we will start expensing them right in the last couple of months, but I could give you what those, what those softwares are.
And, and...
Unfortunately, I can't give you...
The real reason I'm asking that question is, I would love for us to consider using something like GoGuardian to provide that resource to our teachers, Dr. Wells. I don't know if you've seen it or not, but it's a valuable tool, I think it puts a lot of control back in our teachers' hands, as far as, allows the teachers to monitor what our students are doing on the Chromebooks, they can see each student, they can limit where the students can go, our kids love to play, they go to places on the internet, they're not, I know we have content filtering in place, but this allows the teachers to create essentially a list that they can only go to these websites. It's a invaluable tool, I think, and it gives a lot more control back to our teachers, so, something to consider.
Yes, thank you.
So on the, just real quick, on the $1,000 bonus, we, we felt it was important that we do that in June, so it's kind of a recognition and to our staff who have really, worked really hard this year, our teachers and everyone else, that they get it as part of the June timeframe, so we wanted to put it, push it into June timeframe. So it would be a $1,000 bonus, the governor's budget, or the budget that was approved and signed off on May 2nd, gives us funding for the SOQ, but we would have to find the funds for the non-SOQ, which we have a plan to do that.
Yes, we, we still have the excess in, in the VRS line that we could, could utilize also, we have some, we would be looking at our grant positions that are grant-funded, whether that could be written into the grant, and of course, Child Nutrition would, would fund the bonuses from their own budget.
So...
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
So the $1,000 bonus, has that supposedly been in the budget for the coming year?
No, that was for this...
That's in the current budget?
That was approved for this current year, yes, yes, ma'am, not for, not for FY '26, but it was put into the budget in January for FY '25.
Okay.
So it doesn't impact our budget next year, it is a direct for this year.
And then, talk to me about the school operational revenue report, you said that it...
I was just stating that it hasn't, has a new, it'll be a new line item for that bonus revenue, because that's not reflected on the reports right now, but we will be bringing it back to you next month, now that that has, that budget bill has passed.
So how much of our operational revenue has come in?
Let me pull that up, sorry. Of the, we have received 50, 53,841,123, I rounded.
And our budget was 72?
72, correct. If you look at, a large portion of that outstanding is going to be your county, the local appropriation.
Okay, so you have received the 53 million, it's not 25% received?
No, that's the amount remaining to be, that's the difference of what we received and what was budgeted, we have that much of the 18 million.
I was panicking there.
Yes, I would be, too. Of the 18, 18 million that you're showing as available, if you look on page two, where it says, it's the OPS Direct, that is your local appropriation, and 6.4 million of that is in there, and, and also with your sales tax, again, when we say, when we're thinking May, you don't think, you're thinking, oh, you just have, well, this is April reports, but you'll have May and June, we actually have four months of sales tax, so, I'm, at this point, I'm not worried, I do not have any concerns with the revenue, still looking at the sales tax, but at this time, no concerns to pass on.
And when will we get the rest of the sales tax for this fiscal year?
I'm sorry.
When will we get the rest of the sales tax for this fiscal year?
It comes every month.
Every month?
It's just, we're, the way we, we have to recognize it, it goes through, we get two months, we, so July and August is actually in this current year, so we still have four months of, and that's the uncertain number.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Board, any other questions?
Thank you, ma'am.
All right.
Thank you, ma'am. Next we have information items from instruction, Dr. Norman is not here tonight, so Mr. Neighbors will carry that.
All right, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, two very quick updates for you this evening, Ms. Wheeler was able to prepare a memo with our current kindergarten screening and registration numbers, the only thing I'll highlight here is last time this year, we had screened about 177 students, so a few more that we had screened, but we're actually ahead of where we were this time last year with enrollment, so seeing some positive trends there with bringing some more of those kindergartners, and again, if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer those at this time.
Board, any questions for Mr. Neighbors?
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, we'll move right along, our monthly update on best lab utilization, we saw a little less sickness this past month, although spring break was still there, got back to some of our more typical numbers in regards to visits, so no significant changes in regards to our typical data trends on that report, and again, if there are any questions, be happy to answer those.
Board, any questions?
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you. Next we have 10 information items from Human Resources, Mr. Gallagher.
All right, Mr. Chair, members of the board, good evening, have a few informational items for you this evening, the first is our monthly vacancy memo that you have in front of you, any questions, I'm happy to take on that, there have been a few changes since Friday, we're very active and busy with recruiting and hiring, staying busy in our office right now, so, happy to take, any questions?
Not a question, but a comment, I was happy to see that we, I think we hired the Ag teacher.
Yes, we did.
At Munson, so that was very good news.
Gratefully and thankfully, we did do that, yes, indeed.
Yeah, so thank you for your effort, I know it was an ongoing process.
Absolutely, thank you for that.
And it was a struggle there, but I'm glad we got it done, and...
Definitely a shortage area, so we're happy to get that, so...
Thank you.
Mr. Gallagher, I know I'll, I'll hear in a couple weeks, but how many teachers are retiring this year?
Between retirements and, and resignations, or just retirement?
I was just curious, retiring?
Whatever, retirement, I could pull that up for you.
That's fine, when you, when you get it, just...
Yeah, it's, it's, I'll pull it up for you.
Okay, that's fine.
Actually, before the meeting's over here, when my section's done, I'll pull my little list up, so, and I'm going to get to retirement reception here in just a minute, too. So if there are any more questions on the vacancy memo, I do want to take my opportunity for all those listening at home, just to say, you know, we are hiring in ACPS, if you want to join the very best division in the whole state of Virginia, where you're valued, supported, and also appreciated, come join Team Amherst, so, had to say that. All right, so next we have an additional information item, and that is our workday calendars, there are four of those prepared for you for your review, and I'm happy to take any questions if you have any on those.
Board, any questions for Mr. Gallagher?
And just to get back to you, the number's 26, and thank you, Dr. Rose, for pulling that off the spreadsheet, so...
Thank you.
Which leads me right into my third informational item, which is the retirement reception, which again, will be at Sweet Prior College Pro Throw on the 20th, Tuesday the 20th of this month, that does start at 6 o'clock, and you are all welcome and encouraged to attend, I hope to see you all there in present, celebrating our wonderful retirees, that's always a fun evening, I would ask Mr. Terry, if you haven't been asked already, for closing statements that evening, so...
I expect it.
Yes, indeed, well, we're, we're very much looking forward to that, that's just one of the, the fun year-end celebrations that we get to gather together and celebrate the individuals that give us so much over the years, so just wanted to make sure you're aware.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, indeed, and I don't have anything else this evening.
Okay, Dr. Wells, moving.
All right, forward. Superintendent Matters, first budget, we've already, Mr. Connage talked about it a little bit earlier, but the governor did sign the budget on May 2nd, it impacted higher end a little bit, but really did not impact K, negatively impact K-12, again, the $1,000 bonus was approved, and the support cap was removed, so we're working through that, we are not getting it, the count tool that was given out on, I think, May 7th, or May, March 7th, or March 10th, somewhere in that timeframe, was the count tool we'll still be using, they're not going to issue a new count tool, so we're good there, and we're just waiting, again, for the money to be, for the bonuses to cut to us, so we can take care of that, but we're actually, K-12 was spared the, the axe a little bit, so we're very grateful for that. Date reminders, just a few things here, first, Mother's Day is Sunday, gentlemen, don't forget that, ladies, moms in the house, thank you very much for all you do for us, and for all you've done raising your family, so Mother's Day, thank you for Mother's Day, and I wish you the best, Happy Mother's Day. May 14th is senior awards ceremony, that'll be at the high school in the old auditorium. May 17th is prom, that's at 7 o'clock, if you want to go to prom, you're welcome to, just let Mr. Crawford know, and then May 23rd is graduation, that's at 7:00 PM, we'll be sending out next week, those who want to ride, want to ride the van, those who want to drive, parking situation, stuff like that, and then the, and we'll, just like we've had in the past, so we'll put the information out to you regarding that, we'll try to get you there by 6:00, so we have a little chance to have some, like, refreshments, and then do graduation, and if anything you need, if you've lost your gown, or need anything like that, or just let us know, like, about, really soon, so we can get it, nobody's saying anything, so I'm assuming we're all good, but if that's, if that's the case, just let us know, but graduation's in a couple weeks, and we're looking forward to it. Educator Appreciation Week is this week, and so we've been providing meals from Chick-fil-A to staff this week, and that seems to have gone well, and I think people are appreciative of the, they either have a chicken sandwich, or they can have the salad, so that's gone well, and then a lot of businesses and school groups, sponsors of, at certain schools, I know GLAD gave Amherst Elementary some other, some more Chick-fil-A sandwiches another day this week, and other PTOs, other groups have been providing resources, so we want to thank everyone who has chipped in this week to support our staff, and just, again, thank our staff for all they do, because again, without them, we couldn't get the job done, so we appreciate everything our staff has done. The last thing I have is a little video, this was done by WFXR, George Noliff came with us, and we did the trout release for Temperance, and he actually did an article on this, on WFXR, and it's actually been picked up in stations across the state, and some across the nation, from what I've heard.
On my Google alert.
So, if we pull up, Brittany?
Kind of gets through the commercial, sorry.
I'm sorry.
It's time for Outdoors Bound with George Noliff.
Outdoors Bound this morning, and this may sound odd, but have you ever wondered what you might learn from a fish?
I would probably learn how to swim, I feel like they could point us.
I could swim a lot better, yeah.
Yeah, for sure, well, it may not be a question you guys have pondered, I've pondered it, I don't know why no one else has, but one school system in our region, well, they think the answer is that you could learn a lot from that fish, and our George Noliff reports with class in session.
Believe it or not, these are kids so excited about learning that they're running to class. And this is their classroom. Oh, and did I mention that some of who they're getting their lessons from?
Sam?
Our fish?
There it goes, all right.
Welcome to the Amherst County Schools Trout in the Classroom Program, courtesy of Virginia Trout Unlimited and the Virginia Department of Wildlife Resources. Today's students are third graders from Temperance Elementary.
There you go, there it is, open to your feet.
We get eggs from Department of Wildlife Resources in the fall, and they, they hatch those eggs, and they raise them in the classroom in tanks, and then the trout, that make it into the spring, they're about an inch, two inches long, we'll put them here in Pedlar River.
The kids have hatched and raised and studied these little tiny baby brook trout, known as fry at this stage of their lives, all year in a tank in their classroom, now it's time to let them go.
There you go.
Now that the fish are in the water, there are more lessons to be learned, that means finding bugs and other things, but don't tell these kids classes in session, because they think they're just having fun.
I think I'm going to find a couple of crawfish, maybe, maybe like those, maybe like mayflies or minnows, like those type of critters in there.
Definitely hands-on, they'll be up here, they'll be catching the insects, the macronburbus in the stream, they'll catch crayfish, they might catch a minnow or two.
There's a crawfish!
All right, flip rocks, it's a good, yeah, flip rocks.
Mini ones, we got two crawfish!
By flipping rocks and catching what flows downstream in a net, the kids can use the formula to figure out by what's living there, just how clean the Pedlar River is.
Why do you think it's called a water penny?
Because it's shaped like a penny?
That's exactly right.
And in this case, what they found is good news.
What water quality was it?
20.
20, excellent. So is it poor, good, fair, good, or excellent?
Excellent!
Excellent.
This may be the best way to learn about the outdoors, see it, touch it, count it, it helps these kids to put it all together in a way they can't in a classroom, good for them, and in the long run, good for all of us, too.
They need to understand that being stewardship of the environment, they have to be able to, you know, take care of what we have, and if we don't take care of it, nobody else will.
Good deal.
How y'all doing, folks? While those kids were having fun, and trust me, they were having fun, they were also learning chemistry, biology, math, third sciences, climate sciences, and a bunch of other academic disciplines, plus, they were stocking the Pedlar River with our very own state freshwater fish, the brook trout, so they're helping to enhance a vital natural resource, too. You know, I'd say that's a pretty good day on the river.
Absolutely, and very interesting way to learn, right, George? I mean, I don't know, I, I never got to go outside on the river and be hands-on like that.
Yeah, you know, it, it's a very cool program, here's the thing, the lessons these kids learn that day, they're going to probably stick, and the reason why is education experts say, hands-on learning actively engages students, they make deeper connections to the concepts being taught, that promotes knowledge retention, you know, put it simply, these kids are smarter, because they spent some time on that river.
Very cool, thanks, George.
Don't miss Starbuck U, featuring Craig Campbell, May 15.
So I just wanted to share, that was the experience there with him, I appreciate him coming up and... coming up and filming and doing the article on it and how he did it, but anyway, just wanted you to see, if you hadn't seen what we do up there, that's kind of what we do on a day, on a trout, so, thank you, that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Board, any questions for Dr. Wells? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to 12.0, public comment again, so if there's anyone in the audience who would like to approach the board, please step forward.
Mr. Chair, can I just use my loud voice?
Yes.
I just wanted to say-
Yes, ma'am.
Amherst County Public School Education Association, we carried cookies to everybody in the total county transportation, everybody, we enjoyed that, and that the Amherst County chapter of NAACP, we are collecting toiletries for Amherst cares. They asked for 600 toothbrushes, they're going to get them. So we, so I want you to know, the community is also working for the children of Amherst County Public Schools.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Okay. All right, seeing no others, we will move on to individual school board matters, and committee reports, if you have any. So, Ms. Saunders, where you go.
Here I am. Okay, I attended the governor's school meeting two days ago. Graduation was May the 4th, and they had so many people, they actually ran out of programs, and they said that was the first time, I think they printed 300 programs, and they thought they were so happy that every student had family or friends that stood up for them. This is not widely known, but Dr. Smith is retiring, they will advertise for his position in August. I just want to say, thank you for all the staff, especially those that have been there for 25 years, that shows a lot of dedication, and we just want to say that we really appreciate you, too. Congratulations to all the seniors and their parents, I'm sure you're singing a big hallelujah, I know that I would be, I did, so, good job for a great year. Thank you to all the staff, and to everyone who had a positive influence on these kids, so, thank you all. And I'm so happy that we're in the news for something positive, so, thank you, Dr. Wells. All right, that's all I've got.
Great, thank you, ma'am. Mr. Rossi.
And another year is winding down, it's had a lot of good progress this year with the construction, obviously, student recognition is always a great thing to see, when I sit up here, and all those students and their parents getting engaged and involved, and getting them out, and showing their support to those students, and the teachers, you know, the teachers are fighters on the front lines, teaching these students day in and day out, we definitely appreciate that, and I would definitely look forward to that $1,000 bonus, if I were a teacher, that would be, that would be a really good, especially at that time of year, right? And let's hope it coincides with contract signings, just putting it out there, maybe, you know, signing a contract, pick up your bonus. Yeah, it's, it's exciting this time of year, everybody's getting ready for graduation, and I love watching the students come across the stage, and know that there was, there were many years of work that went into that, that short walk across the stage, and I'm looking forward to it again, and summer may be coming, school year might be coming to an end, there's still tests to take, and it doesn't end for the administration, and I appreciate the fact that you guys continue to work, and work, and work, and, oh, yeah, and work some more, because it doesn't end, it's a constant struggle, and I appreciate everything that y'all do every day. That's it for tonight.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Thompson.
Thank you. I know that Will and Denasia have left, but I want to say how much I've appreciated them being here with us on a monthly basis, and all the insights they give us, and wish them well. I also just want to say, congratulations to the Real World Design Team, and to Mrs. Stennett, I think that is just such an amazing, an amazing task and talent that they have, they've just been awesome. It was sad to hear that it might be the last year, but maybe that can change, but they did a great job, so congratulations. I'd like to say, welcome to Kristen Rhodes, new principal at AEC, and to Mr. Neighbors in your new leadership position, so welcome, looking for great things in both of those areas. Appreciate all the educators, the staff, and the students. It's been a great year, you know, you've accomplished one more year we can put behind us, but a lot of great things have happened, so I'd like to say that, congratulations and thank you. Like to say a special congratulations to all the seniors, you know, your education, or at least this phase of it, is culminating this month, and have great things to celebrate, and they all deserve it. Also, would like to let you know that CVCC will be having the graduation next Thursday at 7 o'clock, and that will include the STEM Academy. And I want to say a big thank you to the Amherst Education Foundation, you've been supportive of the children and the school system here in Amherst for a long time, and Amherst Cares, it really shows that the citizens in our community do care, so just thank you very much for those efforts.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Ligon.
I would like to echo what Ms. Thompson said, this is a great time of year, and we surely wish all the seniors and their parents the best of luck, and Mr. Rossi just thought of something when you said it, 12 years of long, sometime maybe 14, depending on how many preschools you went to, will end with the walk across the stage, this portion of it, so, sometimes we don't think about, that's a long time for little people to go to school, they started two years old, and then, you know, so, it's a long journey. I did attend the Choral Concert on Tuesday night, and the singing, and it was beautifully done, and I know we won't be in there too many more years, but it still sounded really good to me, so I want them to know I enjoy myself. Law, we had our board meeting yesterday, and out of the 48 students, we have five from Amherst County there. Law will be having their graduation as well on the 27th of May, and they have two students from Lynchburg City, and one from Appomattox, and we try to get to attend that. We did approve a budget at Law yesterday, we were adding about two or three positions that are needed there, some things that are great there, that we finally got a bus, Law has its own bus, and we're not, I don't think we'll need to ask the divisions any longer for the use of buses, which was a strain on drivers, so, we have a brand-new bus. The funny thing is, the bus kept, and Mr. Neighbors was there, the bus kept going off, and they said it's because there was a snake in the engine, so I didn't bother to go out to take the ticket. I said, "I'm not going outside." So, anyway, I don't know what that was all about, but the way you get a snake out of an engine is you let the bus horn go on and on, so it was kind of funny. But, those were just the highlights of the Law budget meeting. But anyway, also, just to end this up, I did receive an email from Ms. Klein, and I shared it with Ms. Jones from Scottsdale as well, and we are going to be one of the sites for hosting the feeding for the children during the summer on Mondays and Thursdays, so Pastor Lee and the Scottsdale Baptist Church is excited to be a part of that. And yes, we're collecting toothbrushes at our church as well, so, Amherst Cares is just such a worthwhile cause, that I feel good about being a part of that. But other than that, we've just been out at some games and tracks, we all overplace one day, there's a track beat, and there's a game, but we're enjoying ourselves, and it has, the year has flown by, we're not there yet, but it's went on by. I feel like we just got here, said, beginning of school year, now we about to end it. Congratulations, Mr. Neighbors, and congratulations to all those that we approved on the personnel list tonight, and we're moving on. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Sir, you're next.
Chair members, I also would like to extend congratulations and a thank you to Will and Denasia. It's a lot of work for these students to serve on a board, and all the extracurricular activities that they go through and participate in, and it's a lot of effort and work, and so I'm grateful for them and their time here with us, and, and again, all the recipients tonight, the 25 years of service, that's a long time to be in education, and so, what an honor to see them, to hear their names, and I think it shows a level of commitment that these people have for Amherst County, and it gives me great hope, you know, we talk about retention, and how do we keep these people here, I think we need to talk to them, what's kept them here for 25 years, and we need to copy that, and, you know, to keep a lot of these other people, these young people that are coming, how do we keep them here for 25 years? This Real World Challenge, the UAS, and I think they called it the Bunson, with the Y's, they called the group Y's, that is phenomenal. I don't know if we really understand, like, what they went through to create a drone to meet those requirements, to be able to lift and carry those things, but that is phenomenal, and to have young ladies participate in that, I think that's phenomenal, we don't have enough women participating in those science projects like that, and so that's encouraging to me, and I'm very happy to see that, and for them to win at the state level. I hope we can keep a group, maybe they don't participate, but I would love for us to keep a club or something after school, to keep challenging, and if it's strictly for young ladies, I think that's great, I think we need to do that. The rest of them, the welding, I don't know if you guys have ever welded, I've welded, and to see what the student did, that's phenomenal. My wife hates it when I compare myself to someone, she says it takes away, but it's just awesome to see what the student was able to do. And then, last thing I have, Dr. Wells, you had mentioned about asking Will if he was going to join the ROTC. My question for us as a board is, have we considered maybe doing ROTC in Amherst County Schools? It's a great program, I know, depending on which branch of the military, I don't really have a dog in a fight on that, but I would love for us to get a ROTC program here in Amherst County, because again, that teaches a lot of discipline, and it's not necessarily connected to the military, they don't have to join the military or all those things, but I think it would be a good opportunity for us to consider, I would love to ask you to look into that.
We applied once, and I went to war, and our waitlist, and order merit list, but I'm hoping I can work with our local representatives, see if we can get that pushed up.
Okay, awesome. And last thing I have, I did attend the play on, I think it was April 7th, Guys and Dolls, and the last time we have a play in that auditorium, and in typical fashion, our students and all those in support of that program did an excellent job. I leave there, and it's, I mean, it's just, it's a great opportunity for our students, they put so much effort into it, and so, I'm grateful for our arts program and what they do, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, yeah, I want to start off by congratulating everyone in their new roles, anybody, I don't want to try to name off everybody, because I know I'll leave someone out, so, and I really want to focus on the students right now. Like you said, Mr. Rossi mentioned, you know, the time and years that have been put into the education of these students, and we get to go see stuff like the Guys and Dolls, and be a part of their celebrations, like the Golden Tassel Awards, and hear their accomplishments, like the Real World Challenge, and those things, they just, they excite me. I love to see how versatile our students are as they approach graduation. Unfortunately, our seniors don't get to participate in this new building that we've got going on, but hopefully they come back and enjoy it, and those students that are coming up get to reap the benefits of the programs that these seniors are leaving behind. It has been awesome having our student reps come feed us information that they see at the schools, and hopefully take some information back from us to them, so we want that information to flow both ways. So I just want to make sure that all of our students who are getting ready to graduate, I don't care if you're going on to be a Duke, or a Hokie, or a Wahoo, or a welder, or a homemaker, or whatever, just remember, you know, once a lancer, always a lancer, and you take our morals and our values with you, no matter where you go, hopefully you stay in our county, because it is an awesome county, but if you do go outside and go other places, you know, just remember where you came from, we're very proud of it, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
So now, we have one more?
One. So, we have planned a closed session to discuss personnel matters for, basically, superintendent. So pursuant to Section 2.2, JS 3711A1 of the Code of Virginia, it is recommended the board convene a closed meeting for the following A1 Personnel Matters.
Okay. Motion?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Close session.